I'm ready for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ready to vote?
All votes are in. Motion carries on the other side.
Moving on down the agenda, we're ready to take care of business by consent. Ready for a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the items of business by consent except for the resignation of Kirsten Zamareva and authorize the Board President or Superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts borne on behalf of the Board.
Third second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, we're ready to vote? So on that motion, that does not remove the resignation.
It's not the supplement to the supplement. It's just the supplement. But that's fine. The motion was cleared. The motion was seconded. You all understand what you're voting on. We'll get it clear in a minute.
Okay, we're ready for the superintendent's report. Okay, Ms. Crowe.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here in front of you. I think it's been a year. The legislature kicked off the 2019 session and we passed what is called turnaround. And you all are familiar. You've been here for a while. That's the first half of the session that has ended and we started the second half of the session yesterday. So I don't have a whole lot to report on school finance or on education. It was generally a slow beginning of the session, a slow first half. Although we did have some drama last week when it came to the school finance litigation and the bills that have been proposed to deal with the Gannon mandate by the Supreme Court. What happened last week, there are two bills. One is Senate Bill 44 and one is Senate Bill 142. And both of these bills are the Governor's Plan, which is the Kansas Department of Education's numbers that they say will address the court's mandate to meet the cost of inflation. That they said last year the school finance formula was short. So essentially what this does is it puts in $90 million over the next four years. That totals $360 million, obviously, over the next four years. What happened last week was Schools for Fair Funding, who are the plaintiffs to the lawsuit, came back and said that the Kansas Department of Education had made a mistake. And that instead of it being $90 million a year for four years to total $360 million, it would be instead $90 million for 2020, $180 million for 2021, $270 million for 2022, and $360 million for 2023. The Department of Education says that it is a stable $90 million each year over four years. So as you can see, we have about a $900 million difference over the four years between what the plaintiffs say the cost of education will be to deal with the cost of inflation and between what the Department of Education says. We as a district and as a coalition with the other Shawnee County school districts submitted testimony in favor of Senate Bill 44, and that was heard on February 6th. Patrick testified both as the KSB president and then on behalf of One United Voice in USD 501. We were joined with the entire school lobby in supporting that bill, including schools for fair funding. Last week, when this error was when there was determined to be an error by Schools for Fair Funding, they withdrew their support for Senate Bill 44. And so you have probably seen in the news that that has caused a big uproar. And that's what created the $90 million now difference between what the Department of Education says, which we agreed with in our testimony, and between what the plaintiffs at Schools for Fair Funding say now will address the court's mandate. So that's the storyline. There isn't any resolution to that. We submitted testimony this week in favor of Senate Bill 142. That takes the plan into half and again does the $90 million in 2020 and the $90 million in 2021. Schools for Fair Funding submitted testimony in opposition to that bill. They did not appear at the hearing, but they submitted testimony writing opposing the bill. Kansas Association of School Boards submitted testimony in support of Senate Bill 142 as they did in support of Senate Bill 44. KNEA submitted testimony that was neutral. And their argument was that they're concerned that schools won't open in the fall, which is one of the fears that we've had over the last few years because of the litigation. And so they were worried because there is this back and forth on how much the cost of inflation is, that they were just neutral on the bill and wanted to be able to support a bill that again everyone else could support. So are there any questions on that, on the litigation? That's really, I'm sure there are.
Mr. Woods?
I should have just started with questions.
Shox, if I would have any questions about this topic. Just curious, and I will admit ahead of time, I think I know the answer to this question, but I think it ought to be stated for everyone. So you are an attorney. When you read this case and precedent from the court and you look at what they have used as their measuring stick to determine, you know, adequacy, what do you think the court is going to do? And sorry to make you give us legal advice in front of the whole world.
I'm not giving you legal advice.
But, you know, when they look at where do you think they're going to set the yardstick? Which evidence are they going to accept in terms of adequacy since there is, as you've mentioned, an almost billion dollar gap between point of the case?
The way the system is set up is that with any agency, including the Department of Education and the education budget, the agency provides a budget recommendation to the Governor and then she decides whether she will adopt that or modify it in some way. We in Kansas, per the Constitution, have an elected state Board of Education. So they are the ones that put together this number, these numbers, that went into Senate Bill 44 and Senate Bill 142. And that's the consistent $90 million, $90 million, $90 million, $90 million, instead of the compounded $90 million, $290 millions, $390 millions. So it would, it would seem that the court would rely on the Department of Education's numbers since they are the entity that sets the budget for the school districts, just like you all set your budget for the schools.
Well, thank you. I mean, and confession again, well, that's kind of what I think when I read the bill and the case. I just wanted to ask because the delta is so significant between, and as you mentioned, almost a billion dollars. So was that discussed at all at the hearing? Was the department there and did they offer?
The department didn't offer testimony, but did stick by their numbers and said that there was not a drafting error. And there was testimony at the hearing on Senate Bill 44 by Schools for Fair Funding that that the numbers in the bill had been checked and that those were the numbers that they were obviously supporting. So apparently they went back and I think they just took the numbers at face value and then went back and
Rechecked.
Came across this error.
So I ask that just because since we supported Senate Bill 44, that has been our basis from everything that we know that it's going to take to educate students, the cost and what the department is going to do, it's going to take. So I wanted to make sure and have it out there for our folks that that's been our basis as well. And according to history, that's usually the way it works. If it ends up being different, so be it.
And this has all been very confusing and I put as much information I could when I put this slide together because we still weren't sure when we provided testimony yesterday exactly what the drafting error was and what Senate Bill 142 and Senate Bill 44 didn't do. And I think really today was the first time that it became clear that it was a compounding argument, that it was the 90 and then the 290s and the 390s as opposed to the consistent 90 each year over four years for the cost of inflation. And there's an argument to be made that inflation is more every year. But I think the question is whether the 360 over four years is the cost of inflation for four years or if the inflation should be, is
Compound.
Based upon the 90 and then compounded on top of that.
Last question, Mr. President, I guess, just to make sure I understand. So Senate Bill 142 only differs from Senate Bill 44 in the sense it has the same school finance money as separated out of the department's budget.
Yes, and the department's budget is separate.
Did they?
And it is only a two-year
It's two instead of four.
Plan.
So really the court would have to retain jurisdiction and rest upon the commitment of the legislature to come back after the two years, you know, after they had
They probably should.
Yeah, yeah.
Given the track record.
So was there any discussion on why they would separate out the department's budget? What was, what's the point of that and what?
I think the Ways and Means Chair said that they got the full budget in front of Ways and Means and she thought it made more sense to take the operational portion as, when looking at the other state agencies and then look at the school finance piece, the Gannon-focused piece as a separate piece of legislation.
Any other questions for Ms. Crowe? Dr. Mickelson?
Just a simple question, I think, is how much money is the state education budget and what's the rate of inflation? Shouldn't we be able to calculate this with simple calculator?
I think the state education budget is 3.4 billion. So there's a difference. They're saying it should be 3.7. Can you do that right now? I could run it over there.
Probably not. No, I put my mouth. What's the rate of inflation?
I, that I don't know.
Wasn't the number 1.5% or something?
It's 1.5.
1.8 or something like that?
Yeah.
I think that's what they which is, which is honestly, if you were to quibble about just a few million here, a few million there, CPI is what, over 3 now?
Right.
So.
So are you going to come up with that figure?
I'm supposed to be doing that right now?
So do we have a math teacher in there?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. The other development today on the spending, I'm sorry, on the revenue side was the passage of Senate Bill 22. This is the other, as you all know, it's always the budget, school finance, taxes. This is a tax bill. The bill that was passed today is regarding the decoupling or the windfall from, decoupling from the changes in the federal tax code. That passed today pretty much on a party line vote. It goes to final action tomorrow morning, and this is in the House. This is about a $500 million price tag over three years. And it did have two pieces in it that are perks, I think, to probably see if it can, if these two pieces can keep the Governor from vetoing the bill. One of them would be to reduce the state sales tax rate on food from 6.5% to 5.5%. We're currently the second highest in the country for food sales tax in Kansas. And then also to put a new internet sales tax on companies that sell at least $100,000 in products online. The word on the street is that the bill is still likely to face a veto even though it has those two pieces in it. The Governor had a, part of her platform was the food sales tax elimination or reduction. And this does do that, but I think the $500 million price tag over three years probably will offset that. And there were enough votes to withstand a veto. There have to be at least 42 votes to override a veto if that were to happen. The big, I mean, there's some good stuff in here as far as individual withholdings. If they stuck to the itemization, it'd be about 50 million. But the other pieces that are for corporate end up being about 2/3 of the price tag. So that was the big focus of the debate on the floor today. So that will still, it was passed by the Senate. It'll pass the House tomorrow and then they'll have to go to conference committee because those two pieces on the internet sales and on the food sales tax were added in by the House. So they'll have to sit down and come to some sort of compromise on the different pieces that are in the bill and decide what stays and what goes. And then that'll go to the House and the Senate, full committees again, and then be passed on to the Governor. And then she will then deliberate whether she will veto or not.
What I was going to ask, just for my clarification, because I think I heard this in the news and I don't recall the figure exactly. That particular bill, so, and the tax portion of it, it is correct that close to 70% I believe of that $500 million is, will end up basically going back toward your largest corporations?
Right. It's money made overseas, return to the U.S.
Yeah, repatriation.
Domestic earnings and profits from foreign corporations from 16, sorry, from '86 to 2018, 1986.
So out, you know, outsourced and offshore jobs and profits that were made there could be bought back. I don't know any mom and pop operations that can offshore their jobs. So we are allowed to assume that this would be your very large corporations who would be able to bring all of them, probably less than 20, I don't know, who would recoup about 67% or 70% of that.
I think those were the estimates.
And the average Joe would see what out of this? I guess the food sales tax reduction. But, you know, you take $500 million out of the state general fund when you are trying to adequately fund your schools, which is going to take you at least $300 million over four years. The average Joe will end up losing. Now that's, now that's an editorial comment. You don't have to agree with that part of it, but. Thank you, Mr. President.
Other questions?
Okay, just a couple of other things. We did participate, we lobbied on a bill that would have essentially eliminated the utilization of wind production and wind energy in Kansas. We were called upon, the wind energy lobby, to help lobby against the bill that would limited, that would have essentially ended wind production. And I met with different, the different members of the House Committee, the Energy, Utilities and Telecom Committee, and because of the new the new agreement that we have with Westar, for wind energy, we were able to make the case with those committee members that this bill was not a good idea. So it looks like that bill will not see any future action. There was also a bill called the Hope Scholarship Act that would give vouchers for people, or students that report incidents of bullying. I met with different committee members on that bill since that is a part of the platform for USD 501 and One United Voice. And it doesn't look like that bill will move forward either. So those were kind of the other two big pieces for the first half of the session.
I have another question. I'm curious about another bill that we also offered testimony on, the School District Board of Education Reorganization Act. Did that bill ever move out of the Senate? And do we know what its prospects look like on the other side?
The elections bill?
Yeah, the one that allows us to hold our reorganization meetings either when they're traditionally held in July or in January. Because when they changed and moved us to spring elections, they forgot that there's another statute besides just the election. They didn't change that.
I'm fairly certain that bill passed the Senate. I need to check and make sure. But yeah, it was a pretty
Non-controversial.
Easy lift, yeah. I'm almost certain it passed the Senate. I would be shocked if it did not. It was blessed. I know that.
Sure. Thank you.
So Patrick, that changes our our, instead of electing president, instead of in July, it could be January. Is that correct?
Actually, it gives us the option to choose. So historically, our elections took place in the spring. We, you know, swore and new members in July and then there was automatically the reorganization meeting in July. The big thing, in addition to electing officers, you also have to declare, you know, who is going to be your treasurer officially for Bank State Council over the last three hours to, you know, make suspension or expulsions.
Right.
All of those things. Now, I guess, we'll have the opportunity as a Board of Education, since we'll be elected in November and take office in January. We can, until July, when we are in office, it's worth it. It used to force us to do it in July. They did change that statute. So you end up with a lot of lame duck situations.
So, Ms. Crowe, we don't know where that is? That hasn't totally passed? Is that?
It, it will, it will be taken up by the House. So it is, it's, I'm sure it's passed the Senate. I just don't want to say for certain, but I am almost certain. I should have checked again before I came in. But it is being seen as a bill that fixes an oversight. So it's been non-controversial.
Very good. Are you finished?
I think so.
Okay. Any further questions for Ms. Crowe? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So Dr. Anderson is at a very important meeting and so there's no further superintendent update. So we'll go straight to board member comments. Dr. Mickelson?
Briefly, I had to attend several of you, the dedication and open house for the Tropic Hi Clinic. It was an spectacular facility. Very enthused about the opportunities that our students and staff are anxious to see succeed and potentially expand in the future as we see this thoroughly develop itself.
Ms. Johnson? Dr. McCarthy? Mr. Woods?
So the one thing I will say, two things actually. I got a chance to attend the ribbon cutting as well for the Tropic Hi Clinic. Excellent. I still want to congratulate all of my fellow board members, commend them for their leadership. Dr. McCarthy especially, thank you very much for your leadership and your vision and pushing to make this happen. It's one of your big things. Maybe one day, you know, we'll have to name it after you. My suggestion. The other thing, I got a chance, I was at Stout Elementary this morning and having a quick conversation with the principal. Got a chance to witness, you know, a situation where one of our students was in absolute dire need of immediate, you know, attention by the staff. He's having a very difficult it's one of those things that's a social and emotional issue where the student's dealing with some things outside of school, family-related, that are bleeding into their ability to perform and achieve academically. And to watch the mastery of the staff when they responded to this in probably the nicest, most caring way you could imagine, within 15 minutes, you know, everybody has done everything they need to do, got this student prepared to go back and learn. This was good, I guess. I'm not giving you a whole lot. You know how significant it really was to protect the privacy of the students and the teachers. But it was good for a person who gets to make education decisions, but who does not work in a school every day, who is not an educator, to see that our folks really are dealing with more than we know. It's more than just teaching and learning. I mean, obviously, it's the big deal, it's the business that we're in. But to watch the staff people respond to this young, young lady, I will be really honest, it made me want to cry, to watch this young person who was wilting. And they, they still have the job to educate the student beyond what's happening in their life. They've still got to make sure that the student can perform and achieve all the things that we, we vote on up here. So it was a great opportunity to see that in action and for all of our educators, since we have time in the room, especially for those of us who sit up at the dais. It's a good reminder really how much work is done in our schools just outside of the scope of teaching and learning. Thank you.
I had the privilege of going to Meadows and teaching fourth graders about anti-bullying curriculum. And that was a lot of fun. They had, they had a good time. The other thing, we normally don't comment about public comments. But we've heard you tonight and I think things are in the works to look at these areas. I really thank the person from, that put out the Nebraska law so that we can, we can look into those things. I know it's very important to our district. Hairs are very important as well as other classified employees. So we heard you tonight. I don't know what will come out, but we did hear you. So thanks for voicing those opinions. So without any other comments? So without any other comments, do we have a motion for adjournment? Motion and second. Any discussion?